Okay, great.
We can hear you.
I would like to remove item 6.1.3 Budget Buddies from discussion.
That's mine.
Anybody else have any other adjustments?
6.4 we eliminated. Sorry Sue, what are we removing?
We're removing 6.1.3 Budget Buddies from discussion.
Okay.
And Jeff has suggested that we remove 6.4, the local academic indicators.
She was unable to get to that tonight.
So do you think we'll be having a presentation next month?
That's my, based on what I heard, everybody will have the chance to look at the indicators. I think we should send them to our board members and we can do a similar Q and A as a discussion. That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, and since our last meeting, I think that's where we kind of left our meeting on the indicators, that they were going to flesh them out more and give us something more back, right?
But I don't think she's going to be doing a presentation, so.
No.
You know, I think we're just going to be asking questions at the next meeting. So maybe we should leave it on and just make sure that, in case anybody wants to ask any questions with you.
Okay.
We'll have that opportunity and we might have to do it again next month too because of the way this has been rolled out. Okay, Audience and Communications. I think we're all set there. I'd like to announce a change in the budget meeting schedule. I don't know if you all know that we've changed our January 12 meeting to January 20th.
No.
So we've been asked to switch that final budget meeting date because Shelburne, who was meeting on January 20th, asked if we could switch because they're meeting with the Select Board and there is a petition deadline that they need to meet, so they've asked to make that switch with us because they need to.
So it's going to be when?
So the, our meeting will now be January 20th, which is a Tuesday, I believe, instead of Monday, January 12th.
After I tell our buddy. Okay.
Everybody got that?
And it'll be noted in the minutes, right?
Yeah, yeah. Anyway.
Yeah.
And I can ask Sandy to send out another count, you know, list of all the dates.
Consider it done.
Okay, thanks. And I'd like to remind everybody, once again, I know I sent out an email on this, but to try to find a Budget Buddy for this budget season, I think it's really important as a, you know, another opportunity to engage with our community. And having kind of arrived on the Board by going through the Budget Buddy process, I also think it's really a good way to maybe bring on new people as Board members over time. It's a great way to develop the Board. So please try to find a Budget Buddy.
Recommendations on how people have done that in the past? I was thinking of even putting something on like Front Porch Forum.
I think, I think that, I thought about that.
You know, I was thinking about that too. I thought.
Go ahead.
I would prefer to be invited than an open thing. We can explain and give dates than an open invitation.
One of the concerns I've heard about just opening it up is if we get too many, which I'm not sure that would happen, but to have a lot of people who are really unfamiliar with the process and believe me coming in not knowing much about it. There's such a learning curve that we run the risk of having to spend a lot of time educating a large number of people. So it'd be great to have a blend of some people who are experienced or know something about what happens here as well as some new people. So I guess as a first cut, I think it'd be great if you could just word of mouth inviting people to be a Budget Buddy. And let's see where we are at the November meeting and if we don't feel like we have enough. Because last year we only had one and I felt like that was just a shame that we didn't have more voices from the community. So we have two experienced Budget Buddies already signed on now, which is great. But why don't we see where we are at the November meeting and then talk about whether we want to do something more, like along the lines of Front Porch Forum. Okay, and those are only three meeting dates this year, which is fewer than what they normally have had to attend. And those dates are December 1st, December 15th, and January 20th.
15 and January 20.
Right, so two Mondays and then I think that's a Tuesday. Okay, so moving on to presentations. Jeff, so today we're going to hear about Cvu's alternate programming for kids for whom our regular programs don't work well. And this was going to be kind of a great presentation following what was, what we were supposed to hear earlier, the local indicators presentation, because these are the programs that are intended to help kids who often have challenges with meeting the indicators that we were going to just hear about.
Yeah, that's perfect.
I think why this is put into this.
And that is much of what I was going to say as an introduction, so I won't need to. And I will introduce you to some of the fine people who do great work with students for whom it is a struggle sometimes to follow the normal trajectory through Cvu. So we've got Anna Cooper Thwait and Patty Thomashott, our administrators, Gary Jednack, Jim Clapp, and Jen Stevens, who all head up some of our alternate programs. Come on up.
People just started, you wanted to tell before we filmed it though.
Yeah, so we were aware that filming was happening and so we have some confidential, we have photos and a video. So we're concerned about confidentiality and are just wondering if this portion could not be.
If that had filmed and we'd certainly like to share you our audio presentation.
Would it be okay if the cameras were just aimed at the audience the whole time?
Yeah, actually.
Okay, so why don't we do that?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Nice save.
For 16 years and I'm down at the Life Program, which is Cvu's regular education alternative program that's located off-campus. We're down by the library here in Heinsburg. So our task there is to work with students whose needs aren't being met in the regular environment here at Cvu. Students who may be, students who may be experiencing learning difficulties or family problems or attendance issues, things of that sort. And they need more specialized instruction, more one-to-one work with teachers in a supportive environment. So I've got the bullets here. They earn a Cvu diploma through an individualized program of instruction that we run. It's based on a contract, which is, excuse me, a simple sheet that explains the work they have to do each week. My coworker Helen, she couldn't be here tonight. She's a science and math teacher. I do English and social studies. So those are our credentials. We also teach a summer program that is here until the end of July.
Next slide.
So here's a little example of our contract. It's kind of hard to see it, but it's a photograph that we took of a student's sample contract. So each week the student will need to do all those assignments on there. Some of them are groups that we run that are like our classroom time. Others are books that they'll do and individual assignments. They're all differentiated to meet the needs of the students. And included on the contract are students that are on IEPs. They'll have to go to Cvu to get their special instruction and those are also requirements for them. We use this system so that we can monitor their progress daily, keep track of each assignment so they have instant feedback on whether they're being successful or not. If there are issues, then we take them aside and talk about that with them to keep them on track. And each week when they complete a contract, they've earned a certain amount of credit towards the 20 that they need. Each year we serve about 25 to 30 students. A lot of them are regular ed students, some are on 504 plans or on IEPs. Approximately, we looked at the last five years, about 65% are on either an IEP or a 504 plan. Some of the students that we serve who are regular ed or on an IEP are students who might not make it through Cvu's regular program without our help. And some of them would be placed into expensive out-of-district placements, which I think will be true for the other two programs you'll hear about tonight. So I wanted to make that for the cost conscious among you. I think we're saving you money in terms of meeting the needs of these very expensive students who sometimes need to go to a special school. We provide that for you. Some of the other indicators are improved attendance at school. You know, if I talk to any of the students in my program, they'll say that without us, they wouldn't be going to school, much less attending very regularly the regular program. We'll do things like get on the phone, call a parent. If a student doesn't come in the door when they're supposed to be there, I'll get in the car and drive and go grab them and bring them in. Things like that, just to sort of fill the gap between the parent and what your more normal expectation might be for a student's attendance in school. I've been there 16 years and this is sort of a ballpark figure, but I think I probably have a 90 to 95% graduation rate in the program for the students that come to us. Usually the ones that don't make it are the odd ones that we can't get to come through the door. What I used to tell Val was, she would say, "What do you need to be successful?" And I'd say, "If we can get them through the door, we can get them through the program." The ones that don't come in, that I can't get to get in the doorway, it's really hard to serve them. After graduation, most of our students enter the workforce. We do have one student now who's at Castleton, but most of our students will maybe take a few CCV classes or maybe attend the military or get a trades education through a relative or friends. The last thing I want to say that's kind of just off the top of my head about this is that a lot of our students will stay within the district as adults. They'll become taxpayers, they'll become parents that send students to the school. It isn't like just because they've struggled in school and they've needed something different that they, you know, that they, that they leave the community. They stay. They're your firefighters, they're your plumbers, they're your roofers and other people who might, you know, help you out in those sorts of ways in your, in your life outside of Cvu.
Last one.
Then I've just got a couple of photos here, field trips, our classroom, my coworker Helen, so you can get a sense for the program.
Ready?
Great.
Thanks.
Hi, my name's Gary Jednack. I've been in special education for 29 years. I have a great opportunity here to work in what's called the Essentials Classroom. And I've been here, I think it's 15 years, I think that was. Essentials is a placement option at Cvu for special education students who are experiencing significant emotional challenges which impact their education. I always look at that in the aspect of their ability to learn on any given day. So that's kind of our charge to, we have to teach basic skills. We have to teach all the other curriculums that a high school student needs, but there are some things that get in that way and a lot of those are different emotional challenges. So my job is to build that self-esteem, to build that self-concept, to build their, their really understanding that learning is fun and that they can be good learners. And the ultimate goal, which I want to talk about right at the end, is that lifelong learning piece. Being a teacher for a long time, it's fun to meet ex-students when they're 40, 45 years old because then you really find out if you did a good job or not.
Next slide.
So a lot of the supports that are in the Essentials Classroom, there's academic support. Any student that is with, in my classroom, they might be with me 100% of the time. They might be with me 75% of the time. Some of them, as they get older, go down to that last one, is that the ultimate goal is that they leave me and go into the general curriculum. That's always the ultimate goal for students in special education. So we do a lot of differentiated academic instruction delivered in small groups so to get that ability to learn. So we do, we do a lot of field trips, we do a lot of hands-on visual learning pieces. We do a lot of things that they, that the students might not think is that is exciting, but we try to make it exciting. We have immediate emotional and also immediate behavioral processing. And what that means is when there's an issue that happens, a student that has some emotional challenges, they have about, about a 15-minute window that you've got so you can teach or de-escalate. Once that 15-minute window goes away, it's, it's sometimes that issue's gone, so you don't have that opportunity. So they get that opportunity to be able to have that immediate processing. We also, a lot of the students get counseling. We do a group therapy group. We do instruction in social skills. I put social skills up there, I call it teenage survival skills. A lot of students that have emotional difficulties, their, their emotions are pretty raw. So you have to do a little different way of teaching. Every teenager goes through emotional difficulties, but these, that might be a little more acute. Safe base for students, and I take this as a real important piece. The classroom, which is actually one of the most beautiful classrooms that I've ever had. It's a nice big room on the end of the building. We, it's real important that students feel that they can be okay when they're in there. And so we really work on that with the students to make what that safe piece means. And we really work on that. And then also we do basic skill building through classroom and experiential learning. They may think going bowling is just going bowling, but we, we work on basic skills in all kinds of things. Character education, math, science, all the, all the things, even on the field trips, which is kind of fun to do. I work with about 20 to 25 students a year. The, the core group is about 12 to 17 students that are with me. We have, we have a very high graduation rate for the students. The one that I, that I'm really excited, of the last 12 students that were in out-of-district placements that came back into the classroom graduated from Cvu. So they didn't have to go back out to other places. That one I'm pretty proud of. Three of the, three of the five juniors that I, that started with me as freshmen this year are at the Tech Centers and they're all three doing really well. And they're, they're acclimating there. They still use me as a home base in the morning before they leave, but they're doing really well up there in the Tech Center. Two graduates from last year are attending CCV, I'm very proud of that. They send me emails and telling me that their profs at the CCV are a lot harder than I am. I think that's good. And also about four years ago, I started teaming up with English 10 and making Modern World teachers here. And so every freshman that I have every year, that next year automatically goes into those classes. And I team up with that. We have an assistant that goes into that class. And we've had really good luck with, with kids being successful in there. And because they, they get a lot more intensive basic skill training in that class with, with us as an. Okay. We also do a lot of service learning projects. My social studies class, one of the main things that we do in the past two years is we cook meals for, and I always forget the organization's names, they're going to really be mad at me. It's Prevent Child Abuse Vermont. And it's a great organization. Pat Hendry from Opelia works with us. We make meals for families in need that are in struggling in abuse cases. And the kids have just really enjoyed this. They, they cook, I mean, we're talking for maybe like 20 or 30 people, they have to cook these meals. And so it's a lot of work and we, we always get it done way before Thursday, which is the day they pick it up. And then we also, we've worked with the Central Vermont Health Connection. We've worked with the Senior Center here. We've worked with a lot of other nonprofit organizations that, that need volunteers. And the, and the students really enjoy that part going out. And it's also a way for them to meet other community members that they might not be able to have a chance to meet. And then maybe my, my, one of my biggest and coolest things that I always enjoy, a lot of the students I work with have very few opportunities to get out of Vermont. Two years ago, we went to Washington DC and of the, I'm going to pass this photo around so you can see our group. I'm pretty proud of this. Of those 12 young folks, there were two that had actually left the state before. And so it was really, it was one of the coolest weeks I think I've spent in 29 years. We've also done Boston last year. We went to the zoo down there, which is actually a pretty amazing zoo. It's right downtown in Boston and that was really neat. In New York, we've done a lot of things in New York. I have some things in my, in my back pocket, hopefully they can come to fruition for some other travel in the next few years. Okay. This is just a couple of things that also, every spring we do lots of plants. And we, we don't sell them, we just give them away. We have, last year we did tomatoes, we do basil, we did a lot of different other herbs. We did, two years ago, we had a young man who actually is farming on his own now and he kind of ran the whole thing for us. These are some projects that we actually showed, I think a couple of years at, a couple of years ago at the Open House, some bridge projects, some robotic projects that some of the kids built. Just some different things that we do basic skill training, not just in, out of a textbook. And then maybe my favorite picture is this is where they're all looking for, and that graduation piece. And so last year's graduating class, I had, I interviewed kids who graduate that have been on my caseload and students that I've worked with. And kind of what they thought and the things that they talked about was never giving up. I'm able to do anything I set my mind to it, do it with a positive approach. And I feel like I know a lot more now. So I wanted to tell you just before I quit, bank tellers, tire store manager, grocery store assistant manager, dental hygienist, farming on their own, college. 2009 graduate came to see me today, he just got, he's getting a job as a security guard through a security guard company in Burlington. Those are students that, that were in the Essentials program. To me, those are, that's what makes me know, okay, I might be doing something right. Because when they leave here, you want them to be, and they'll stay in their community and they'll, and they'll be great community members. So that was, and the young man who came today to see me, that just made my day because that kind of said why I do this part. And I appreciate you giving me the opportunity that I can do this, okay? Thanks.
Do you have somebody doing this?
Yeah, you.
Oh, which do I hit? Okay.
Hi, I'm Jen Stevens and I work in the Fundamentals program. Most, a lot of people at Cvu get Gary, our program's confused. So you guys are going to be all, you're going to know the difference now because we are very, we're different programs. Students in my program have academic difficulties that prevent them from being successful in one or more of their regular education classes. My students don't typically have emotional problems. I mean, they do have some emotional problems, but they don't, that's not why they're not successful. They don't have behavior problems, they just have a really hard time learning. So that's why they're placed in my program. So the typical student in my program, if there is one, they have language-based learning disabilities. They have anxiety disorders that lead to attendance issues. A lot of my students, and it seems to be increasing every year, I don't know why, but they just have a really hard time getting to school. I have a student who is a junior now, who actually was homeschooled in middle school because it got to the point where he wasn't coming to school at all. And now he's, he's fairly successful in my program. It's taken us ninth grade and 10th grade and now, but he's comfortable. He, he likes being in my class, comes to school most of the time. He's not out for weeks and weeks at a time. So our goal with somebody like him is to get him then out into the regular ed program, at least for some classes during his senior year. But that's a big piece of my program is these students with these anxiety disorders. Some of my students have attention issues. Some of them have a specific learning disability in a basic skill area, reading, writing, math. Maybe not all three, maybe just one. Maybe they're really great at everything except for math is really hard for them. And these students need a smaller class size or a more structured environment. I think the cores do a really great job of making Cvu seem smaller for our ninth graders, but even us, being in the core with 80 students is just way too much for some of my, for some of my guys. They, they couldn't handle that, so. So indicators of success. There are approximately 20 students in a given year in my program. There take, some of them, they take at least one class in fundamentals. I teach, I follow the block schedule. I teach a block of science, a block of math, a block of English and a block of social studies. And they, some students are in all four content areas with me. Some are just there for one, some are there for two, some are there for three. It really depends on what their needs are as a student. I have two program assistants that are with me in the program all day. There are a few blocks in the day where they would go out to a regular ed class with a student as we're trying to transition a student out if, if the student needs support. But there's probably within that 20 students, in, in an average year, there's eight or nine students that are with me for all four classes for the, for the entire year. The majority of my students are ninth and 10th graders. In a perfect world, they come to me in ninth and 10th grade and then I transition them out, at least part-time into regular ed classes. Some of them are not able to be transitioned out or they can only get out for one class. Sometimes just taking the electives, which they do all, all four years, even if they're in my program. They still do reg, electives with, with, in the regular ed program. Sometimes that's enough for them and they still need the safe place to come back to my class. I'm finding that students are attending school more regularly. That gentleman that I talked about before is, I think he's a success story as far as I'm concerned. Like Jim, I pick up students on my way to school sometimes. I have students that text me, I live in Shelburne. They, they know about what time I leave my house and they miss the bus. A lot of these, my students are, they don't have a lot of support at home. They're raising their younger siblings. So if a younger sibling misses the bus, then they miss the bus and so it causes a chain reaction. So they call me and I pick them up or they call the classroom. They know that if they want to come to school, we're going to get them to school. It doesn't matter what time it is. So two years ago, I had six freshmen that were fully enrolled in fundamentals courses. So they, we have transition meetings between eighth and ninth grade with the eighth grade special educators and myself. And these students came to me, taking all four classes with me. So of those six students, two are currently successful at Tech Centers. One's in Burlington in the Autobody program, loving it. And the other one is doing the Computer Systems program at Essex. Two are fully enrolled in regular ed classes. They have some para-support with them in the regular ed classes, but they're, they're successful, doing a great job. I'm still pretty involved with their education, but they're not in my room at all anymore. And one is 75% in regular ed classes. So that means that this young lady takes one class with me now. But she's doing everything else, either in the community or in regular ed classes. And I don't have any current seniors enrolled in fundamentals. They've all been placed at Tech Centers or in regular ed classes. So my last slide, I had, I explained to them what I was doing. And I try to get them to talk in front of the class a lot and to talk out in class. It's really hard for some of them. And I assure them that I won't ever ask them to do something that I won't do myself. And so I explained to them what I had to do tonight and how much I don't like talking in front of groups. And so I asked them to each write what they like about fundamentals, what works for them, why is it a better place for them. And this, this was a gentleman, he wrote this. He, this guy did not want to be interviewed. He, he really, really dislikes school. He wants to go to work. He wants to be a farmer, he wants to work starting yesterday. He can't wait until he can just do that. So he's doing really well, he's successful in school, in my program. But we're constantly meeting with his parents and the community skills folks, trying to figure out a way for him to buy in. He's in ninth grade right now for the next four years. So, you know, and he's right out there, "I don't like school. I don't, I don't, it's hard for me, I don't like it, I just want to be on the farm." And then I have a few other clips of students that were willing to have their faces shown.
Want us to try and roll it?
Yeah, I don't know if, is the volume on?
Well, I don't know, no.
Let's see.
Let's try.
No, okay.
It's, uh.
I like this one a lot.
Sure.
Oh. Yeah.
I was thinking, I was going to do the 7.4. Yeah, okay, okay. I've been, she thought she wanted to, I think she looked at the other email and it was okay.
The work is easy, I can understand what the teachers are talking about. I get my work and I love that, it's, it's, I understand.
I like fundamentals because it works on everyone's ability in each class and no one may judge each other because of that difference of sibling. There isn't a lot of students, so it's easier to like, I'm wondering if I can talk about it in the audience.
That's it.
Any questions? Questions for any of these three? I guess another hand up.
Yeah. I was curious about, like, well, first of all, I can't remember what the percentage of kids who are identified as on an IEP at Cvu. About, is it about 11%?
About eleven percent, right.
About a hundred and seventy is what it is.
And then I, you know, I, as a special educator, I always think about placement versus program. And so I was thinking about what, what are the, what are the steps? Or what are the, are you following MTSS, for example, and really looking at tiers of support? Or is it like, here's where you're going because this is kind of what your profile is like?
No, we, we definitely follow the tiers. And especially when students are coming from the eighth grade. We set, in any IP meeting that you have, the first thing you talk about is what does the student need? And so they figure out what, you know, we figure out what the services are currently and then what that next step on that continuum is. So it's not like you're here and then you're over here. You follow that continuum piece and you follow the tiers.
And actually this year more than ever, we have been placing kids in the core.
Or as much as possible. So kids that traditionally would have been placed right into fundamentals or essentials, typically that doesn't happen with life for ninth graders right away. But kids that otherwise were, would have been slated for those programs, we have them starting in the core, just at least to see how they do. You know, we have special educators in each core now.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that too, the level of support.
That level of support has increased.
Other models like that that might support kids.
We went, this year, we went and actually observed the eighth graders in their eighth grade classrooms that were slotted for our two programs. And I went to Williston and I was observing eight students who were originally on the docket for my program and ended up just have, taking two of them. And the rest of them, I said, no, I think they can, I think they can do it, do okay in the core.
Thank you, that was really helpful.
Yeah.
I have a question. So you shared information about what these, many of these students do after they graduate and they go into the workforce or the military. How much support do you guys provide in helping them kind of find those opportunities after they graduate? Do you do any or do?
Oh, oh, very much so. I think once a student, special education becomes in eleventh grade, the transition after high school becomes pretty paramount in their programming, be it the classes or what. And we, I always tell the families that I work with, we're going to give you all of this plate, big platter of all these things that are out there in the community that you're either eligible for or you can utilize. Because there's a lot of that things out there that kids don't know and families don't know. So like I was telling you, the young man today, he got this job through vote rehabilitation because he started with it when he was a junior in high school. So yes, that's, it's a really important piece that the outside agencies know of these people, of the kids before they get out there.
That's great.
For students who don't have special education services or placements with vote rehab, I think it's more of a struggle for them due to the rural nature of the community. Transportation is a huge issue for that transition piece. For us, what we do is we have an expectation that every senior, before they graduate, get their diploma in June, they'd be working before that as an expectation to make that transition while they're still in school. The years that I've been here, the economy obviously plays a role in that. When the economy's doing well, then they can try various jobs and maybe find one that they like. When the economy's not doing well, or if they don't have transportation, it becomes a real issue for them. And that's a hard thing to solve as a school, is to make that transition to the workforce when, generally we're charged with the academic piece. And then to get them a job and get them transportation, those sorts of things are hard to do. We did have one student that Jen and I shared who's come to my program. And staff actually, his birth certificate had the wrong name. They misspelled the name on there. They needed to straighten that out. They had to get that correct before you then could get a social security card that was right. So then now he's working at the Mole here in Heinsburg. But he's living in Bristol as he's, you know, his family's in this district. But his ex-girlfriend's mother, he's staying there. Those kinds of things are what we're trying to solve all the time is, you know, it's just a quagmire of issues that come up. But the transition really is important because like what Gary said, I think, I feel like we're successful when I see that student later on and not only are they working, but they're a taxpayer. If they hadn't earned that diploma, they may not be employed and they won't be paying taxes. Hopefully, you know, eventually they'll pay a lot of taxes, right? You know, support the school, but I think that's better than not working. So that's one thing, so sometimes we could ask questions, you know, academically, how challenging is it? That's a question that we need to adapt to each student. But to get them employed is really the goal beyond the diploma for all of us.
Great.
Make this the last question?
Yes, last one.
I understand when students come in as freshmen or whatever, and our goal is to graduate them. What happens to a sophomore who's struggling and then is identified in the, in the regular track? Can you pick them up?
And that goes.
Gets students all the time. Not all the time, but, you know, I get, I always acquire a few each year.
And it goes back to that piece that no matter where a student is, when you sit down with that, that team meeting, whether it's EST, what's that student need to be successful here at CVU? And you, and you figure out where they are in that continuum and what that next piece should be. That's a great question, too.
Yeah, one thing I'm working on is trying to encourage more regular ed students who might be identified by guidance counselor, someone as struggling in a specific area. Let's say it's English, which is one of my credentials. And then I'm willing to, hopefully, it happens this last summer. We were receiving students who needed just one credit in one area and maybe it was remedial. I'm happy to provide that for that student so that the rest of their classes are a regular CVU. But sometimes, and those of you who are parents, maybe you've had a child who was just that one subject. And hopefully we can, you know, continue to do that and build that a little bit.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Before they leave, I just want to thank them on behalf of myself. I think success in programs like this is really dependent upon the people in charge of the programs. And we have phenomenal educators, not just the ones who are here. But the job they do is thankless in so many, many ways. And they're pivotal to the climate of the building and they've just done a remarkable job with their students. I want to thank them. And Joe.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but as a classroom teacher, I just want to add that the classroom teachers hold these people in a long respect. I mean, they work together with them and they're not separate as far as awareness. It really does make a team.
No.
Thank you.
I think he does the most, you know, we talk about personalized learning plans.
Right.
I would say that, because I work closely with Jim, I don't know, I say they've been doing personalized learning plans. Actually, all, all three of them have been doing personalized learning plans forever. And so it's not a new concept. And so it's wonderful to have Helen be part of our school-wide PLP team because she's going to tell us, you know, how to do that and do it well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to section five, reports to the board. Back to you.
And I will keep this brief and focus on really the three big poke eye for us this year. And those include standards-based learning, PLPs, and Sback. So with the first two, as you can see in the report, let me just find my report, thank you, is that the district now has joined a, or created a team of educators. Myself, Patty Tomaszow and Anna from CVU, and then principals from all of the other schools. And we've applied to receive one of the AOE grants that is designed to have teams work on creating a proficiency-based system. The object is to create a three-year implementation plan for the entire district. CVU's in a particularly good place to lead some of that work. But it'll also benefit us to look at it from a K-12 perspective. So that when students reach us, they have also been moved through a system based on meeting proficiencies rather than just experiencing it once, once we receive them. And another layer of that is how PLPs inform that process. So I'll be joining that team and we begin in November. And it's, I attached all the details to the back of my report if you're interested in reading that. And then finally, Sback. This will be their first year and we'll be giving them in the spring. We have an Sback committee here at CVU that is charged with creating the schedule and the logistics and working out the, the technology needs specific to delivering Sback and also integrating technology into the classroom, not just in preparation of Sback, but because these are really good practices and sound educational strategies. One of the things that we are currently working in the state is that the window for giving the Sback for high schools is quite smaller than it is for K-8s, for whatever reason. K-8s have three months. High schools are only given seven weeks. It's April twenty-first to June second. Sounds great until you realize that first week, everybody's on vacation. May fourth, AP exams begin for two weeks. May fourteenth, kneecap science for all juniors. And boom, you're in the last week of school. And so we have asked Sback to allow us to start sooner. And that means the entire state has, all the principals in the state have asked that. We're waiting to hear from them. But we are concerned about how, how much attention we can pay it and how, how, how much, how committed students can be given all that is going on in the month of May for juniors.
What's the time element for taking these tests for students?
Approximately eight hours.
For students?
Yes, that is the estimate. However, for the first time, this is an exam that you are given as much time as you need. Unlike kneecaps.
So students have as much time as they need?
Absolutely. So if the eight hours is not enough, we have to arrange however much time is necessary for each student.
Okay, and that's spread over how many days?
Over that whole window. We've got the seven weeks. So we have to come up with a system that where it doesn't mean, unlike kneecap, where you had to have everybody take it at the same time.
Right.
Because you were worried about.
Right, this is.
Cheating, et cetera. We can cycle twenty people through.
Computer-based, it's a little computer-based.
Right, and it levels itself as kids.
It's diagnostic and so therefore no, no two exams are the same. But there are significant technology challenges associated with this that we're trying to work through. That's what I have.
Besides yourself, who's doing the, this training, this?
The AOE.
Yeah.
My, from CVU, it's myself, Patty Tomaszow, because she's the head of our PLP team, and Anna Cooperthwaite. And then from the other schools, I think it's each principal and one, one or two other special educators.
Great.
And one, one person from central office. I don't know if it's going to be Elaine, Molly, or Megan, but it'll be one of those three.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, CSSU debrief, Jean?
Well, unfortunately, most of you heard the entire CVU, the CSSU meeting because it was still going on when you showed up for the, for the, no, it was, I think, we had Steve Dale, who's the executive director of VSPA, come. Give a little sales pitch on what the VSPA does for folks. And then we, he took some question answers, actually very, very good questions from the board. What's the VSPA think about single payer and healthcare and how's that going to be handled? We talked a little bit about how they, we get these notes from the VSPA during legislative session. So clearly things are, decisions are being made and actions are being decided upon. So he talked a little bit about how those things are done. So he touched on all the kind of important ones, I think. And then we set up committees and a couple, pretty much everything else I think is on our agenda anyway, so.
Yes.
I did forget one thing I wanted to add that I did not put in the report. Rick Wormley, as I've referenced him many times before, expert in standards-based learning and author, is coming to work with our staff on the thirteenth and fourteenth of November. That will include a presentation by him from one o'clock to three o'clock on November thirteenth. You are all invited to attend.
Is that time again?
November thirteenth, one to three in the afternoon. I know it's not ideal. And right now I'm scheduled to have dessert with the principal on the sixth. I am working with Mr. Wormley to push that back a week and have him join me as my special guest. And the two of us can speak with whatever, however many parents want to attend.
Is the November thirteenth, one to three presentation open to the general public?
It's, it's, no, no, it's specific to CVU teachers, a few teams from the middle schools, and you.
And where will it be held?
It'll be in the auditorium. I'm sorry, I forgot that piece.
Well, standards-based learning.
Yes.
Faculty member, Robin.
Sure. Robin Fawcett is the UVM Outstanding Teacher of the Year. She is extremely well-deserving and I'm really proud to have a representative such as Robin on Wednesday, this Wednesday, receiving that award.
Great, okay, thank you.
Lisa and Lucy.
Yeah. Lisa and Lucy, what's happening with the school body?
So students are just back from a four-day weekend. We only had three days of school last week due to, on Wednesday, the sophomores and juniors took the practice SATs and ACTs. So it was a half day for them. But then we had a half day of school after the testing, which was, I think it was good. So, yeah. And the quarter's ending next Friday, so everyone's getting ready with tests coming up and progress reports being sent out. It's just hard to imagine that already a quarter has gone by in the school year. And also the musical is happening this week. It starts on Friday night and there's performances Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday afternoon. So that's Once Upon a Mattress and everyone's really excited. Everyone is having a great time with the show, so that's fun.
And Lucy's in it, so everybody should come watch it.
What's your character, Lucy, so we all know?
I am a jesterette, so. It's really fun. And then we just wanted to mention, there was a CVU at a glance at the beginning, beginning of October where parents could receive their student's schedule and go throughout their day, which I think parents like and are always surprised that students are taking so many different classes. And as for sports, the seasons are slowly winding down. Everybody's entering playoffs. And that kind of wraps up what's been happening for the past month.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to fields committee.
So I just didn't get this in the packet, so sorry, we're still meeting when the package material went out. But this is the report from the athletic field committee. I just, I put the charge on here because it's been a while since that happened. But we're trying to come up with a recommendation to the board on how to move forward on the fields. We've met three times. The status sort of in the middle there. What we've, what we've done as a committee is worked, we've articulated the goals of the project, review and redefine the options, given some new information. And we've developed a process to come, to come in a manner, process, well, to come to an answer, I think. Basically, what is, we've developed a process to have, to work around the options and the goals to try to come up with a solution that we'll be able to articulate pretty clearly to the board and the community. So you can see the following were agreed to be the goals of the project. Really, this was important because we needed to be able to rank, you know, our solutions. So they really shouldn't be a surprise to anybody, but at least it's all written down here on paper, right? So minimize the number of incidents in which the use of our fields is prevented due to poor field conditions, particularly game events. Meet the field demand for practice and gameplay under ideal field conditions. So we just try to separate out bad field conditions, we need that, solve that problem, and meet the demands when the conditions are good too. And guarantee that the playoff games and senior days and rally games and such can be played on the home field. So that was what, we thought was the committee, were the goals of the project. Where it says the following were agreed to be noteworthy outcomes. So these are other things that the fields would solve problems for us, but really wasn't the reason that we were going to the community at some point for it. Longer practice seasons and extra capacity for community use. So then we come up with our evaluation factors. We're looking at lifecycle costs, so not just the cost of putting it in, but maintaining it and replacing things, you know, over a longer period of time. Safe playing surface, no adverse environmental impact, gender equity, equity among teams, and gender, the community support. So those are the things that we're looking to evaluate our options. The options that we're looking at, I should say that one thing that's changed, if you remember the last time we were doing this, we really looked at two options to improve our fields. One was an artificial turf or two. We'll put that on one side. And the other was a field improvement, natural turf solution, which at the time we had a, in the GAIL report, and we had this, we did have this double-checked, was around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a field. Basically, you stripped off the entire top of the field, about, you know, two feet down. You put in new piping. You put in new piping, you put in a new playing surface. Um, and, and that was the, that was sort of the other major option to really solve the problem. But if you had to do that on five fields, it was more expensive than a turf field. And that's why the recommendation from the committee last time was, for the same price, we know a turf field solves our problems. We don't know that this other solution will solve our problems. So, that's kind of where we left it last time. Since then, Kurt and Jeff and Kevin have done a lot of work to look into some other options. And there's another one that doesn't, I'm not gonna say that it's good enough to, as an, as, as the $350,000 solution, but there's about one that's cost about $50,000, which is, involves putting new piping in, but not replacing the playing surface. So, it may be a good enough solution for some of the fields. So, rather than say you need to spend $350,000 times five fields, it could be you spend $350,000 on one or two fields, and you spend $50,000 on other fields, and you might have a more affordable to the community approach to the problem. I'm gonna hesitate to say it's a solution to the problem. And that's sort of where the board is right now, is looking at all these different options across five playing fields and saying, what, do they solve, how, where are they in meeting our goals? And, um, can we kind of clarify down to like one or two options to bring to the board to consider? So, that's pretty much where we are.
Great.
Yeah, Lauren.
I think you said that's where the board is now, you meant that's
That's the committee, it's the committee, yeah, sorry.
So, you have some other meetings planned, and how are you gonna go forward?
So, I'm just about to hit the button on, found two, actually, two times between now and our next board meeting, where we're good, the committee's gonna meet, and then hopefully in November, we come back with a recommendation. I can tell you, it may not be a consensus recommendation. It's very likely that you'll have to split, a split decision, but that's, that's democracy.
But that's important.
There's other options being brought and considered, too.
Right. Well, there's just good options that we just didn't have last time, so. Yeah, but remember, they're not, you know, and, and there's risk involved in anything that's not a known quantity, but, um, we're gonna look at them.
And we'll talk about that more next time.
Right.
Jean, I have one question. That $350,000 option?
Yeah.
Is that a guaranteed?
Nope.
Okay, great.
What's with the risk?
The cost or the outcome?
The outcome. The outcome. Yeah, no, I mean, there's, there is, there is risk involved in anything that's not a, an artificial turf solution. And that, but that's whether you have to do some weighing of options. That's where we are.
And we're, we're also talking about possible risks of artificial turf based on some other information, too. So, we're just looking at all of it and trying to be as deliberative as we can about the best choices to bring to you.
Jean, is there room on the committee?
Can't wait.
To join the committee? No?
I don't think at this point, we're really, we're down to two more meetings.
Okay.
But we'll bring it back to the, to the whole board for discussion.
We'll be discussing it as a whole board, for sure. Okay, thank you so much, Jean.
Right on time, look at you.
Oh, yes, yes. Okay, six point O, Discussion Matters. So, we're gonna start with the budget. Bob, do you just wanna? Actually, I had a question because of the S U meeting. It sounded like they were looking for us to affirm our purchase services.
You know, I did say that and left you with that belief, but I think it's in your November agenda.
It's in our November agenda. Okay, we're just gonna discuss it tonight, thank you.
I'm sharing with you the, the circumstances of your affirmation a month earlier, so those, you can cogitate it in four weeks.
Right, thank you.
So, if you're interested in cogitating, you need to, you need to tell C S S U what services you're going to lean towards. C S S U, we ask you to commit to that in November, so that you don't surprise us in January or February that you're bailing on transportation or going some other route with food service or something like that. So, these are the ones that are starred, are the ones that we think you're going to say you're interested in continuing to get services from the S U.
And, and ever, all of them, with the exception of I T, were assessed according to the services that we use? And I T is done by?
Yes, I T is the only one assessed by A D M.
By A D M.
Of those, yes. The rest are more services-based.
Does anybody have any questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward. We've done this before.
Yeah, the only difference being the special ed.
Yeah, the chart's very different than last year, because there's three columns for special ed services that you used to ask C S S U to deliver, that now you don't, you don't land it. It's provided to C S S U by C S S U. It's not a purchase service.
Okay. Capital Projects, the three-to-five-year plan.
Can I do some overview comments? Is that okay with, with you, Jeff?
Yeah, please do.
This is kind of a Jeff and Bob and Kurt, and Kurt's out of the office this week. So, he's asked Jeff and I to represent him well. There's three documents in your, in the package. One is a cover sheet that explains, for those of you who are interested, details behind the projects that he's listed on the maintenance and operations section of his plan. But let's focus on that first. For maintenance and operations, those are things that Kurt's gonna undertake on the school's behalf in those years and fund it directly through the budget that you've provided him in operations and maintenance. In the past two or three years, working with the facilities committee, he's kind of allowed the committee to get into the details on what projects he's doing in both his budget as well as the capital budget. So, the detailed cover sheet and his matrix of maintenance and operation talks about what he's gonna do within the budget. And I believe he's funding these all within his budget, doesn't need you as a board to take action or decision packets to be considered when you, you develop your budget for the next year.
Well, to say it another way, this is assuming he gets the same budget he did this year.
Correct, that's another way to word it.
That is another way to put it, yeah.
Well, you asked him on the email.
I did, I asked him on the email.
And you said?
Yeah. I like that distinction. Yes.
Don't let anybody get too safe.
Okay, so, the one I'd like to spend a little bit of time on and make you understand is the one that says five-year capital plan, which is his explanation of larger projects that either need to be funded from the capital fund, that's C F, or V A is voted article. So, um, he's, he's luckily operating from a platform of you have a construction fund that has, up until now, has had some regular streams of revenue added into it year after year, like the impact fees that you collect in the community of Williston and Shelburne. Um, so, that's allowed the facilities committee and Kurt to fund stuff directly out of the construction fund without having your community vote an article every time you, you need to spend money in that direction. Some get large enough that they won't be funded, or can't be funded from the construction fund directly without going to voters. The most noticeable example on the sheet is the one that he's proposing you give approval to for fifteen, sixteen, to repave the main parking lot for approximately $294,000. So, if you discuss and concur in time with his recommendation, you will see an article in January that asks voters to approve borrowing enough money to do that project in fifteen, sixteen, paying it back over, say, fifteen years, and giving you authorization to incur the debt to do so. So, that's how this sheet works.
But these are, these are recommendation funding.
This is the first time you've seen it, so yes, this is a recommendation. This isn't, I'm not looking for you tonight to debate, discuss, and vote. If we get no signal that you're violently objecting, Jeff and I and Kurt will likely bring back an article for your approval or a discussion sometime in your budget season to say, "Are you ready to consider that article?"
Which is something we have to take into consideration if we're also thinking of going to the community for a turf field.
Well, that was my question, is
Correct.
Would you wanna do that?
The other, the other thing is just to see where the budget is coming up. I think, I, I meant to ask you, Bob, if this is right, you're not, but I think we have a step, a pretty significant step down in our bond payments coming up. It's either this year or the next year. And so, if that creates space in the budget, I'd just as soon put some of these things in the budget rather than incur debt.
Yeah.
Right, so, some of those things, we just need to, to keep in mind that if there's room, I'd rather just pay for them, you know?
Yeah, what, what I'd like to do is entertain any questions anybody has tonight. But also, this goes back to the facilities committee. Our original plan was that Kurt would have this done in enough time that there would, you would get it after one good discussion with the facilities committee doing that. So, we need to go back to this first meeting of the facilities committee and have that conversation, because the committee never got to see this before it went in your board pack. Okay?
Well, it was, the point that Jean brought up is if you put Kevin Arkel for the turf fields and the paving of the parking lot next year, I think it'd be a little hard to swallow. So, my other question would be, is it, do we have to do the paving in fifteen, I guess that's gonna be on our facilities committee.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing to discuss in our committee.
And so, and the construction fund, so money goes to the construction fund through impact fees, and how else?
Um, typically, the construction fund is the, is the area where money that you had on projects that are completed and left over. So, if you borrowed $2 million for a project and you only spent a million nine, the remainder sits in that project, you've, you've used that to, to, to creatively fund auditorium renovations and that kind of thing. The resources you get beyond that into your construction fund are impact fees from the two schools, the two communities that collect them. And you orchestrated an interesting deal with C S S U that your construction fund would pay for the paving that went around the bus barn, and then, C S S U would pay you back in $36,000 installments over five years. So, that also goes into your construction fund.
Okay, can we direct money to the construction fund through our budget?
Yes, you can, you can create a line item in your budget, if you would like, in your general fund that says, "Transfer $50,000 to the construction fund every year."
And, and looking at what's been laid out here for the next five years, is that something that you guys talk about in the facilities committee, about whether or not that's something that would make sense for us to do? Okay, so you'll
Yeah.
Yeah, we also talked about
Bring that back if that
Yes, the discussion that we had, I think Jonathan brought up last year during budget sets. As this building's getting older, we need to start perhaps setting aside a higher run rate for that list that Kurt has on maintenance. You know, some of these things here go, that go every year, kind of look like maintenance to me. So, perhaps it's time, again, if we have a little bit of room, to have, you know, put another $20,000 a year into maintaining the facility. We've been kind of blessed with ten years of low maintenance, because it's a new building, but we're running out on that. So, those kind of things will probably kick around at the next meeting.
Great, okay, thank you.
Um, before it just goes away, this whole security camera, entry door, I don't want anybody to think that's just, I mean, that's not something we're just slipping in, right? I, I don't think this board's had a discussion about whether or not we want security cameras.
Right.
Well, whatever came out of the
Yeah, right.
Decision from, you know, locked doors, security cameras, security guards, that whole thing.
My recollection is that, that we went out with, or maybe it was even Sean, went out with a, with a
It was with Sean.
Survey, a survey, and got some feedback. And I think we saw the results of the survey, survey, but I don't think we've ever kind of had a consolidated discussion about that.
We've changed the entry doors. Uh, security cam, I think that's only the bus barn, am I right?
Uh, those are already in place, but before we react and fill in the details on the scope of that project without Kurt, let's, let's, that one in particular, let's send back to the committee and really understand what it is. Kurt was
I know of any other than a bus barn.
Yeah.
That's news to me, that one.
Yeah, it had a little asterix on it, I just want people to know, it was not something we discussed and decided on.
Yeah.
Do you feel like that's a conversation that we should have as board to kind of tie up that loose end, or?
No, I think Well, in general.
I just meant the general.
Right.
General idea. Philosophy of it.
No, we never had closure to that whole discussion about the safety and what, what was the result of that.
I think there was some conversation at one point, should we have a policeman on?
Right, there was, there were all those things.
We didn't, that didn't go over too well, if I remember, that was sort of
But didn't they survey to find out what people thought we needed for, whether they felt safe in the building and some things like that?
Susan's point, I would love to see it all wrapped up. And I realize it's not on, it's not on the work plan, so you're gonna have to see if Phil fits this, but, I mean, I, that's always, I've always felt like that was a loose end, we didn't
Okay.
And just to let you know, I was not privy to any of those conversations.
We'll fill in.
I need some lead time on getting filled in on.
Yeah. I suspect before we start putting cameras around the school, we may wanna have an extended conversation about it, so not just tuck it in five minutes on a budget meeting, so.
Yeah, good point, thank you.
Good catch.
Okay, moving on to six point two. I'm gonna talk about, I guess, each of the policies individually. So, I guess we'll start with personnel recruitment, selection, appointment, and C R C.
So, process-wise, Lauren, you wanna remind us where we are in this again? This is
The policy committee discussed these four policies. And they, some recommendations were Cindy listed here. And what you see in your packet is how that, those recommendations would look in that policy. So, it's a track change kind of situation. And, um, there were only a few places that there were some major issues. It is, you know, Jeff, you're linked, I think, yeah.
Yes. Much of it is, much of it is semantics, but I would say the one around, uh, volunteers in the building, which is much bigger issue for the K eights than it is for us, did undergo a pretty good edit.
Could we work through maybe each one of them separately? Any comments from the board?
Sure, sure.
And Lauren, will you be collecting comments? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
In the efficiency of the board's role, the, the policy committee is really where you've assigned this responsibility. So, so, you don't really need to recreate the work or repeat the work of the policy committee, but if one of you has some insight that Lauren needs, a perspective that Lauren needs to have to represent you well with the policy committee, that would be the kind of input she's looking for at this point in time, is that?
Okay.
Yes.
But we can ask clarifying questions of anything.
Anything you want, but
So, because I had one.
I didn't want you to, you need to do the work.
So, the first one and first one?
Yeah, D one, on the first one. I just had a question, um, what page is this? It's under a section called selection. Um, item two, the last sentence, where it says, "And/or truthful." I'm just wondering
I'm responsible for this, because it originally read, "Was accurate, complete, and truthful." And I said, "Isn't accurate and truthful the same?" So, this was the suggestion to accommodate my obsessiveness.
Okay.
It's accurate and/or truthful. I think it should be accurate and truthful and complete, or I don't know, whatever, you know, but
I would support that, so. It's confusing.
We're gonna eliminate the and/or, just to be in, right? I mean, we're not making that optional.
One or the other, but not both.
Right.
That's right.
So, that was where that came from.
That's my feedback on that.
Okay, anybody else?
Okay, um, how about personnel files? Were there any comments about that? No, okay, and then, the volunteers and work-study students, do you wanna talk a little bit about how that was changed?
Just that it, this, they redefined unsupervised and supervised. And it's a different level of, whether you need a criminal, criminal background check or whether to just go to the registry and have us cross-reference your name with the, with the registry. And again, it is primarily a K eight issue, and there's clarity now around who needs to have a criminal background check and who needs to simply be run through the register based on whether you're going to be with students in a supervised fashion or an unsupervised fashion, as maybe a mentor or a chaperone on an overnight trip.
And so, what Jeff's talking about really are the protocols that are used to implement the policy that we've just read. So, that isn't all spelled out in the policy, but that kind of
We don't approve procedures, we just approve the policy.
Well, to some degree, I, my concern with this one was that it doesn't actually say what we're doing with the volunteers, anywhere.
I think it just says that Elaine would be
Right.
Setting the protocol.
And I don't think that's appropriate. I think the board should weigh in. I think this is actually one of the big reasons we're changing it, is that right now, some of the schools, my understanding, some of the schools make their, if you're going for a field trip with your child, you need to have a criminal background check, which is crazy, and it's gotta be a barrier background check, which is crazy, and it's got to be a barrier to some parents being able to participate.
Right, so, so the way the protocol is, is being changed.
But my point is, my point is, is that if I disagree with that, this policy doesn't say whether that's the procedure or not, I think it ought to be stated what the procedure is so that the board can decide if they agree with that. A procedure to me is like, you'll go to, you know, this place and get this check done at this time.
So what you're saying is this protocol that I was just describing, or Jeff was just describing, actually rises to the level of being policy?
Yeah.
And then how that's carried out, who, where you go to get your.
That's procedure.
So, so to be, I guess to add a little bit more to the protocol, and we can pass that message on, you know, back to Elaine or to the policy committee about how much of this should be put into the policy or not, but the, she's differentiated, or they've differentiated between unsupervised and supervised, as Jeff said, so unsupervised and supervised overnight would both require a criminal record check, so the fingerprinting, and that would cost roughly $40, and a check with the Vermont Internet Sex Abuse Registry. And then supervised, just during the day, like on a field trip, would only require the Vermont Internet, Internet Sex Abuse Registry check, so.
That was my understanding, but that second point I didn't see anywhere here.
And not the criminal background check, or because of what Jean was saying, some people have, you know, raised the point that that's a pretty high bar to have to get over considering the cost and the time to.
Go to the film.
Having done it at children's community school, pretty much if you were going to volunteer for anything there, we needed fingerprinting and the background check a couple of years ago.
Right, the law has changed.
And that's being revised.
We concur, there was inconsistency across sports schools.
Because the other thing too is, it is a cost, and here it says it, it wouldn't be, it wasn't obvious to me if the cost would be covered or not, it almost was like, well, the cost might be covered, and if you have parents who want to help out and want to volunteer and don't have the money, you wouldn't want that to be a barrier to them. So I was interested, there's a way to compensate for that.
My experience working with college students who are in schools volunteering is that as long as they're in supervised settings, they go through just the criminal records check and it is at no cost, and, and then if they're doing direct work with students and they could be in unsupervised, unsupervised, then they have to go through the full gamut of fingerprinting and criminal, is that true?
That's correct.
Yeah, and I think that's what.
It didn't used to be that way.
Yeah, that is, and I think that it does bother me to ask volunteers to pay for the record checks, but that's what happens right now.
I'll bring it back only, I think I'm pretty clear.
Okay, so you got both points.
Doesn't cost anything. I mean, that, that doesn't feel right to me.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, yeah, D9, public complaints about personnel, was there anything, any comments about that? Okay, okay, moving on to six point three, Act 153, 156. So as you know, these acts address consolidation of special education at the SU level. Before we jump to the question at hand, I was going to just briefly review how we got to where we are right now, so, and I might be wrong based on what I heard at the SU meeting, so Bob, please correct me if I am. So as you may remember from last year, the law requires that all licensed special education staff, so teachers and administrators, become CSSU employees as of July 1st, 2014, and that this has been done. As you may also remember, we had the option to keep special education support staff, the pair professionals, at the local schools. And last November, the SU Board voted to keep support staff as local district employees, based on our understanding at that time that we could continue to budget special education costs at the local level. However, over the course of last year, we learned that the entire special education budget would have to be moved to the supervisory union, so as of now, the CSSU budget includes the special education professional educator costs and, and the entire special education budget, including all program costs and revenue.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the local district budget only includes the special education pair professional contracts. So it's now become clear, as the SU has looked into this more closely, that the, I want to say the bookkeeping associated with managing such a small portion of the S, special education budget at the local level has become onerous, and they would like us to reconsider the decision that was made last year and consider moving the special education pair professionals to the SU budget. And some of the reasons for our original, original decision to keep support staff at the local level in the first place had to do with our desire to allow schools to do their own hiring, supervision, and assigning of support staff, who often tend to be parents or residents in the local district, in their local districts. The SU administration believes that this would not change if the contracts were moved to the SU, in part because the process by which support staff currently report their time would not need to be changed. Another concern has to do with the issues of seniority and reassignment of support staff, again, because they typically live in the district in which they want to work, and it is expected that those topics would be addressed during the support staff negotiations which are occurring this year. So I tried to just kind of give you the whole background, and we should discuss this issue so that we can provide the SU with feedback.
Can I embellish it a little?
Yes, please do.
Okay, what I'm about to say is Bob's opinion and reflection on what he thought you all did last year, and I may find out that I'm the only one who held that belief, but when you, you had this conversation a year ago, the decision at table was, you're obligated by the, the state of Vermont to move a section of your special ed employees to the SU, nothing else other than possibly paras, because they made it law that professional employees moved last year. You decided since that all, all they asked for, the right decision for that year, which is 1415, is to leave everything elsewhere it is, including the paras, and they gave you the latitude to do that in the law. So I thought we were making a recommendation on what you would do intelligently for 1415, given that setting. I had no intent that that would be the same recommendation that would rise to the top when you had to move everything over, because it makes less sense. To me, it logically makes sense, if they're asking you to arbitrarily move one piece over, leave the rest where it is. Next year, we move it all over, and you vote to leave a piece behind, which doesn't make as much sense now looking at it a second year later. So we're likely going to come back to you with a recommendation that's different for 1516 than it was for 1415. And we wanted to kind of brief you on the conversation, the need for a decision and a reconsideration, so Megan has it on the agenda to chat with you about it a couple of times before you make the decision.
Does it create more work for Megan if we move the paras over to her, or no?
The simple answer is not, not so much. What changes, what fundamentally changes when you make a decision to leave the paras here is their check and their W2 has up in the upper left-hand corner, CVU rather than CSSU. And when they approach retirement in the state of Vermont, they're approaching it from CVU as an organization rather than CSSU. Those are fundamental, that's the differences. Regardless of where you put them on their W2 and where you put them as a Fed tax ID, they still work for Megan, they still work for the special ed director that works for Megan regardless of where you have them, and they still, both cases are doing the same great work for students that they were, they were doing either place. So it's more a question of where they land from an IRS standpoint, if you will, it really doesn't have that much operationally difference, other than, if you're me, it's a lot more cumbersome to have an organization consolidated and then have to track a portion of it that's sort of not consolidated, but then has to be moved over because all the costs are Megan's, but then has to, you know, that mess. But I wouldn't worry too much about Bob's mess.
Worry about our own.
Yeah. It just, the other thing I said, you, you go either way, but I bet that if you go the way of leaving the paras here, boards after you will have to reconsider it, because at some point in time, if you've consolidated special ed at the SU, you've consolidated special ed at the SU. But that was an embellishment, your excellent summary of.
Very, very good, thank you.
Drove that point on, Bob.
Are there any thoughts about this?
Well, I think part of this is going to sugar down to what happens when we go to pass, try to pass our budgets, and trying to explain this to the public, where even next year, just consolidating special ed at the SU, our SU budget's going to soar, right?
Yes, that's correct, and I don't think you should, you're going to have enough of a challenge keeping people focused on the true issues because of the change in structure of budgeting, I wouldn't take them on a journey to have them understand paras.
Yeah.
Just let them see it all.
And I thought, it sounded like Elaine was quite reassuring about this, I mean, it sounded like, I thought when we first talked about this, that the flexibility that's available within each school with their paras and how to maximize situations for kids was really important, and that somehow that, that was what schools were valuing, and Elaine sounded quite reassuring, don't worry about that, it's not going to change.
Yeah, Megan's flexibility hasn't changed, she can continue to, to look at multiple ways to skin the cat, actually, either way you go.
She doesn't.
Whatever.
She's a cat.
I think that, I, I don't have a good recollection, but I think there were paras at CDU who were concerned about their split responsibilities and, and being torn.
Maybe acting as regular paras and special education paras.
Jeff, can you help me with that? Just, Jeff, can you help me with just the? Yeah, my understanding, I think what your recollection is, it's, it's connected to what we did last year when we made the change from reducing paras and adding case managers, and because of the impact it had on program assistants who were not in special ed programs. So none of, none of that is impacted by this decision, that was completely related to a specific move by us to add case managers.
But the CSSU meeting, Elaine said that there've been conversations, and when questions came up about any of the, how will it look, or how will it play out, the conversations were, the, the end result was satisfactory to the paras, because Elaine did address that.
I mean, I think just to, you know, get, get it out there so we're not, what I, my recollection on why it made sense at the time for the paras to stay local is that most of the paras are somebody's mom, right, or somebody in the community, they make almost no money, and it's, it's, you know, they, they come in and do great things for kids because they care about their little community, and they don't want to be employees of some other thing they've never heard of. And so that was, that for me was something that was really pretty powerful, that would, that made sense, let me just finish, Leah. And the other thing is that not, paras are not, not, not all, there are some that are 100% special ed and 100% not special ed, but there are some that do a little of both, and they have to do all this time sheets and stuff, and I think that there was some concern at the administrative level, I don't really remember if it was you, Jeff, or the other ones, but that some of the administrators had some concern about being able to direct the workload of the paras in the building if they really report to somebody else. And so those were the kind of the two things that were, to me, it's like, well, as long as they're giving us the option to do it, it's no harm, no foul, doesn't make any difference in money, they're local, they're, you know, their, their boss, you know, is right there, everything's simple. But that's, that's really kind of where I came down on it a year ago, now it's turning out, maybe it's not so simple, and maybe they really should be in the special ed organization if that's what we're paying them to do, and so.
And then it's our understanding that neither of those would be a factor?
None, neither of them would be an overwhelming factor, according to Elaine, that couldn't be managed, right? I'm sorry, Leah.
No, they, I, I was trying to recollect, if part of it was also the question of, could somebody be moved to another school that they didn't want to be in, I think that that was part of it, and that goes to your comment about, you know, they choose to work in the community in which they live, and, and they don't want, they don't necessarily want to assimilate into another school community, and so, but it sounds like Elaine, you know, Elaine and Megan are conscious of that concern as well, so I guess that would, that, because that's, I think that relate, my recollection relates to yours, but just, we're just slightly different.
And that's, I remember Bob, it's what Elaine.
Yeah, if I could, those, those sorts of items, the, the process of reassignment and whether you're earning seniority locally or at CSSU are issues like what we did with the professional employees, will be taken up in the context of, of negotiations, and both sides will understand the pluses and minuses, and then a decision will come from that process. And, and at this moment, Megan can accommodate either, you know, just as long, as long as we know which it is, or how the process will work, we're, we're good, we just, like seniority, we can't have them be discretionary on where they earn, we need to, we need to make an answer, and so we know how to get that answer.
Yeah.
That's the flexibility that Megan and Elaine still have.
Great. So Jeff, you don't think it's a problem at CDU, you're comfortable?
I do not, yes, I am comfortable.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, six point four, local academic rigor indicators, so as you know, we didn't get to hear the full presentation during our common topic, but I thought I'd leave this here in case anybody really had anything that they wanted to share based on what they saw in the, in the packet with Jeff, or if we want to kind of wait and see how this plays out at the next month's meeting.
I would just, since I was on the Outcomes and Indicators Committee, I just, just while you're looking at, just something to think about between now and then, it's really easy to get sucked into saying, why are we doing this, it's just more standardized testing, but if you look at those indicators, only a couple of them are academic rigor, and the question becomes, Marilyn, you can help me out with this discussion, we had a long discussion, we have an academic rigor standard of, I wish I had it open now, of high expectations, and we have a test score of 62. What does that mean? Does that mean we've met the outcome?
That was a question I had, what is the goal of our indicator, do we have a goal?
Right, exactly, and that's a very.
Do we want 100%?
Yeah, and that's really where we had a long discussion.
The point, sort of the trend though, if you give the same kind of assessment, slice of assessment at this point this year, and then same point this next year, and the same point the year after, you can at least be able to see, it might be totally ridiculous and meaningless anyway, which a lot of this stuff is, but at least it's getting better, or is it getting worse? And, and, you know, and I think that that, that's where you start getting something that's.
That could be one, that could be something.
That is the hope, I, I heard that in the presentation, I only heard the last piece, but it was, we would like to have indicators that are going to be consistent over time and not change all the time, because they don't do any, you any good if you keep changing the indicators. We'd have a lot of conversation around, so.
I mean, some of them are like, how do you, one of our indicators is about number of kids who finish four years of.
Right.
Of foreign language.
Yeah.
Is 40% our goal?
Right.
Is 80% our goal?
Because if we want kids to have four years of foreign language, we should design our system differently to make that happen.
Exactly, and, and is that the right goal? So, so really it was kind of an interesting discussion we had, so, so we had this meeting with the Outcomes and Indicators Committee as our last meeting, we're going to have another committee, Jeff was there, smiling, is, and, you know, we really just kind of had some discussions around, okay, well, here's the outcomes, here's the indicators, how do we know if they're good enough, and then do we need another set of measurements, you know? You know, do we need another, you know, do we, do we say, okay, 72% are. you know? You know, do we need another, do we say, okay, 72% is our goal and we're at 43%? I mean, you know, so that's a big open question and-
Another question I had, though, is that, you know, I've heard variously that some things are developmental. So, you know, reading is developmental in nature and math, acquisition of math skills. And yet, some of the indicators had to do with the, like the second grade. Molly mentioned a couple of really key ones. So, reading at the end of second grade is a huge predictor. But I wonder, how does that mesh with then this other idea that reading is very developmental and they're, I don't know. I don't know enough about this topic to really know that.
That was a good comment, because I think what it's trying to suggest is that there are these places and these benchmarks that research has shown are good predictors of successful readers or whatever, like second grade. Then the question is, if somebody doesn't hit that benchmark, what do you need to do as a district or whatever to provide more early intervention so that kids can come along in their reading to get to that point? Like with having algebra by a certain period of time makes it more likely that you're going to take higher math and more likely that you'll go to college.
It just seems like we're kind of flip-flopping on some of the things that-
Yeah, I don't think they're mutually, I don't think they're not in sync, I guess. I don't see them as mutually exclusive. I see them as fitting together.
I mean, I think the word she used was a dipstick. You do it one time. And that's based on pretty good research that's predictable for future. It doesn't mean that that reading can still be developmental because I think that's what Jeff was talking about, going to more of a standards-based approach in the district. I mean, so the district is looking at a more developmental thing. So you have, but you still need to have those points where you can check in and see where you are. And I think that's the hard part, is finding what the indicators are and what they really are. And academics is easy.
Right. But just to keep this perspective, one, just a reminder is that this actually came out of work that we'd done at CDU, as a CDU board, because we kept coming back to some people on the board saying standardized tests are not everything we should measure. Won't say who that was, Lorna. But so, the board chair kept saying, well, then what do you want to measure? And so, and so we sent Sean off and he did a really good, I should probably just, I should scrounge it up and send it out, really good discussion about, we had a big board discussion about what do we want kids to do when they graduate? So that's the outcomes that the board wanted, and they did, they covered all these different areas. It wasn't just about math and English. And so, we were off developing this. Charlotte was off developing their own. And I think Elaine just kind of had a freak-out moment and said she was going to have five different sets of outcomes. It was going to be a nightmare. So that's when we got together. But the intent is, board work is defining the outcomes. Administrative work is to define the indicators, but the board has to say, yes, that's what we meant by that outcome. And that's sort of where we're-
And I think the other challenge is, because if you look at, and she spoke to this also, there are so many indicators now. You really just need a few because you can't, you just can't deal with that many. So that's the other hard part, is what's really the one you want where.
It's great work, though. It's really interesting. It's not as good as bus notes. Signing bus notes is still my favorite, Bob.
The only thing I'll throw in here is on the perimeter, I'm on the perimeter of this one, but the conversation, the angst and the quality of it changed dramatically when the administrative team was obligated to put real student data next to each indicator. All of a sudden, the game got-
High stakes.
Personal. Which is a good move. Up until that point, it could be that-
So abstract.
That abstract conversation. When you put numbers with it, it forces you to say, well, that doesn't look really good. What are we doing?
What are we doing?
And so it's good news, but it needs, a lot of good work's gone into it. It needs a lot more work to really land where it needs to land.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to action matters. Could I have a motion to approve senior privileges?
I'll make the motion.
We're all excited about that.
Yeah, we're all excited about that.
I'm going to let Lisa talk.
Signed, and then they bring them into the school. And they just say that you can leave campus during the school day without having permission. I mean, you have to come back, but like, if you want to- To lunch or to study at Bristol Bakery, you can leave and then come back.
Okay.
All the paperwork is in. I'm satisfied that they have earned it and that they've met all of the criteria that we usually use to determine whether we want to bring this to you or not.
And there are consequences.
And there are consequences, Kim, yeah, just so you know.
Yes, there are.
And I have a senior, so if I come home and this hasn't been passed.
It is a big responsibility. It's a serious responsibility to be letting our kids go off-campus and come back. And so it's really a sign that this board says we trust the senior class. And it really has to be pulled back if too many people break those rules, so.
Are there ways in which the entire class loses its privileges?
I remember one time in my tenure it did come up, that it was, we were very close to pulling it because there are just too many kids who broke the rules.
Can I deny my kid?
Yes.
Actually, I think literally you can, right?
You could have, we have, yes.
Everybody's form, and there are some on the form that have said, I do not want senior privileges. But they all forms indicate that.
To me, the responsibility of peer monitoring is a huge learning experience and not disappointing peers and faculty and whatever. So, use it well and-
Make us proud.
All right, then. All those in favor of approving senior privileges, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Every year now, it seems like they're much more, must be the social media. It used to take forever. It was like unusual to get it done in October.
Okay, 7.2, could I have a motion to, oh, I'm sorry.
Does that mean the students, the seniors have not had that privilege until now?
Correct.
Why do you know somebody who left?
Okay, moving on. Could I have a motion to approve the co-curricular committee charge as printed in the packet? I guess I could read it. The charge is to create a mission statement for the CDU co-curricular program, identify desired co-curricular program outcomes, propose a funding model for the co-curricular program, and revise the draft CDU co-curricular decision-making guidelines document, which was prepared in 2012, so that it reflects program goals and includes guidance on program spending reductions during times of declining resources. Can I have a motion to approve that charge?
Second.
I have kind of a friendly amendment, maybe, just because looking at the wording, which I think this is really good, because I know it was really hard to come up with a charge for this committee. But I'm just thinking that the last sentence, maybe, it shouldn't be so focused on reductions, but maybe prioritizations. Reflect program goals and includes guidance on program spending prioritizations, period.
Not talk about declining.
Right, because we could be adding, too. I mean, it's just, you know, or we might have to be replacing at some point, so it's just a little less negative.
Well, we might be adding. Life changes.
What a kick-ass volleyball team, first in the state.
Yeah, we had an undefeated regular season.
I saw it in the paper. It's like, yes.
Made it in the free press.
It was in the free press, yeah. Yeah. But it's a club sport, so we could be looking at, you know, prioritizations, too.
Okay, so we vote on the friendly amendment first?
If it's a friendly amendment, we just vote on it.
Just vote on it as-
If you accept it, whoever made the motion, if they accept it.
Yeah, I accept the change.
Okay.
Thank you, Ray.
Any other questions, discussions about this?
I do have a question about the mission statement and how that fits into the district mission statement. I mean, every program we currently have, we ask the question, how does it fit? How does it meet the mission statement on the board? So I'm a little concerned about creating a separate mission statement for co-curriculars. And maybe we could tweak it a little bit to just say, identify how co-curriculars will fulfill our mission statement.
Yeah, I was trying to think, like, purpose in instead of mission or something, but that might work, either way might work, but, you know.
I really think it's important to address, though, what you just said.
Yeah.
We worked hard on that mission statement.
As long as it kind of, you know, to me, meets the goal, you know, why do we use public money to fund co-curriculars?
Right.
So, I like the idea of-
So we have two friendly amendments, right?
This is very friendly.
So what did you write, Susan? Would you write, would you write for the-
I just put identify, well, okay, yeah, I actually just changed under the reports to the board, so let me see. To, can I just say, to identify how the CDU co-curricular program, how the CDU co-curricular program meets the CDU mission statement?
CSSU.
CSSU. Would that work? Okay. Any other comments? It is a long mission statement. And also, we should look at the dates that I put. Reports to the board should occur as follows, so we can modify these, but I was suggesting that we have the mission statement and desired outcomes at the November regular meeting, the proposed funding model at the March regular meeting, and the revised guidelines at the May regular meeting. I don't know if these are too ambitious.
The impact of any funding model would be-
For the next year.
For the next year.
Right.
And when you say the proposed funding model, I mean, that seems like a can of worms. I'm not quite exactly sure what you-
Well, we both ended up already. Now that we know how the program's funded, that was all the work that we did, you know, last year. So I think that now that we know what's going on, we can decide to leave things as is. I mean, we could make that decision, but we really haven't had the conversation and-
I think November's probably a little aggressive since it's like three weeks from now.
Yeah, I mean, it's November 18.
You won't even get the people together by then.
So really, though, our next regular meeting after November would be February?
I mean, as long as the board's making progress, I don't think you need to micromanage the committee. I mean, the committee, yeah.
I'd just like to have something that they're shooting for.
Yeah.
And therefore, you have to change that first bullet because they're not creating a mission statement.
Right.
Whatever your language was from above.
I'll make it consistent. So, well, let's just put in some meetings, then. February?
Yeah, just do February, March, and May, or February, April, and May.
Okay. Just to give us some targets.
Yeah.
Okay, any other thoughts? All right. All those in favor of-
Challenging a co-curricular-
Approving the motion? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and I had sent out an email asking for any of you who are interested in serving on that committee, and three of you responded, so I'd like to appoint Polly, Jean, and Jonathan to that committee. So thank you for volunteering.
Got an all Williston committee. We can meet in Williston. Really? Nobody else wants to join? Come on.
Susan, I'm also from Williston. I think I sent you an email.
Yeah, I said Jean. No, not you. I didn't, I didn't put you on.
I thought I volunteered, too.
Did you volunteer?
I'm really interested in some of this, so I'd be happy to, but if you've got four Williston people, that's probably a little much.
Too much Williston, huh?
I'd be happy to share my thoughts with the committee separately.
Yes.
Do you think that's problematic, though? I really hadn't thought about that. The three that I had heard from were all from Williston. Is there anybody else who would like to be part of this?
As we always say, we don't deal, we don't-
It's not a town thing.
It's not a town board. We don't act as separate towns, so.
Okay, well, I'm sure, as we hear reports, the rest of us can weigh in on anything that we're hearing about, so. Do you, I mean, if you want to be a part of it.
You know, I've got some strong ideas about it, so you'd be surprised. Yeah, we talked about some of the finances things that was kicking around and stuff, so. I would like to be one if it's, I don't really think I'd be a problem child.
So all four?
Okay, the more ideas, to me, the more who are interested and want to be involved and have ideas, the better. So I will appoint Jean to that. I am going to, though, I would like to appoint Polly to chair this committee.
Excellent.
Polly, are you amenable to that? Great, thank you. All right, then. 7.3, appoint support staff negotiations committee representative. I would like to just go ahead and appoint Lorna because she's-
Lorna?
Lorna, where are you, Lorna?
I know, I didn't volunteer.
She volunteered to serve on this committee.
Uncomfortable about how long it's going to take. I thought it was going to be a real fast one, but now it's gotten more complicated as we speak. But I already have that hat on.
Okay. So thank you. And 7.4, communications request.
So from the communications committee, it sounded like there was some concern about asking too much of either CSSU or CDU staff to come up with articles. And we looked at some of the articles we wanted for the year for CDU. And so what we've kind of decided as a group is if we could come to the CDU staff for at least three different articles, if we could then do like, work a question-answer type format, where if we could pose some questions and you could answer those questions, we would then write up the articles, submit it to you, to the staff person who we'd spoken with, see if they agree with what we've written and if they're in accordance with that. And then we would, originally, we were going to submit it then, but we wanted to maybe show it as well to some of the other, let some of the other towns see it, too, before we submit it to the articles, to the papers.
So do we need to do this as a motion? Or is this sort of a-
I think it got there because you wanted the concurrence of everyone to kind of endorse the work you're doing.
Yeah.
If that's a way to word a motion. You would like some endorsement to move forward.
Although, one of the things at the CSSU meeting that I was at, one of the board members was concerned that if we approved this, it was almost like, well, that means you can't ask for anything other than what we've now just approved, the three articles. And I think that was his concern. And I didn't want it to seem so closed, like, oh, we can only write the articles that we've asked about, but we can't approach people for anything else. Because I have to say, having spent several hours coming up with a, you know, month-by-month article list, we've already changed some of those depending on what's happened in the school throughout the school year. So, you know, I see it almost as a little bit of fluidity in there. And if something happens to come up, if like, you know, the turf stuff comes up and we find we really need to address this now, then we might want to speak with a staff person and have a staff person help us with writing one of those articles in the interim. So I didn't want it to be so cut and dry that you can't step out of those bounds. So I'm not sure how to do it, is if you have to like, come to a board meeting to present it to get it approved each time.
The CSSU board meeting, the motion did not spell out what the topics were. So I think, I would say that you're good at the CSSU as long as it's no more than three. You know, when you go beyond that, then that would be-
The issue there was that we're asking a lot from administrators, a lot of time, and from teachers, a lot of time that really should be spent other ways. So, you know, I think, you know, I think we need to feel comfortable that the communications committee, and I think I feel very comfortable, would be sensitive to that. And that someone like Jeff could say, you know, this is a great idea, but I'm really, really busy for the next two weeks and, you know, talk to me later. And if, feeling free to have that, be able to say that to us is important.
So, I'm, Lorna's the way, that's how we've always operated as a communications committee. We've always tried to present our requests in that way and to be very sensitive. I hope you felt that, and the people, your staff people and teachers that we've worked with have felt that. I think that when it got to the point where we were making requests to the SU, that's where all of this kind of came from. And also, I think we need to make sure that you feel comfortable saying no to us when the timing isn't good and you feel like you've got too many things going on. So we've never really had that conversation, and this is the time to probably have that. I love what you just said, that idea of keeping things flexible because there are changes that happen. And I'd like to have, be able to have a conversation with you about, this is what we would like to do. If you can do it, great. If not, we'll rethink it and come up with something else. And I think that's how we had been working.
I think also approaching someone and saying, can you write an article on this topic? That might take like five hours to do, but if you say, we have these five questions we want to ask you and we will write the articles, a question-answer article, that takes way less time. And I think just switching that format really takes a lot off the shoulders of the person. Or sometimes I might approach someone and if someone like Jeff can't do it, he'll at least know who might be better to answer the question.
I appreciate that distinction. I think it makes a significant difference to me because we were being asked to write articles and we were struggling with that.
Yeah. You know, it's, it's almost beyond just communication, like any committee of the board, at some point you have to, when does the request of administration from the committee become unreasonable? Right. For instance, when, when we were talking, which you guys did really well, when you came back talking about, last meeting about tracking all the student in the co-curriculars, that I don't think we really tasked the committee to give that assignment to, to Jeff, right? That would be something that would be sort of beyond normal committee work and it'd have to come back to the board. So it's kind of the same thing. If you guys have three questions and answers, I don't feel the need for this board to have to vote on that any more than, than me having, having to come back to the board because I want to set up one more committee meeting for the field discussion, you know? So, so I don't, that, anyways, that's my, that's my take. This doesn't seem unreasonable.
The one difference though between what we talked about at the SU and working with CVU is that as part of our articles, we've always had two sections that were really specific to CVU. One was the good news section, and we would tailor that to each town. And the other was upcoming events because it felt important to us to include upcoming events that.
Were particularly open to the public and, and that we wanted to let them know about.
To really welcome the public and give them opportunities to come into the school. So, Robyn.
Yep.
Robyn, Loza.
Loza.
Yeah, she helped us out with that significantly.
Right.
She's a very busy person.
Yep.
So I guess we should have that conversation, whether or not that's something that you think you could help us with on a monthly basis.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I think the majority of the, of what you've described should work fine. I like the question and answer aspect of it. You know, the good news and the upcoming events, I think are things that maybe we can have some of our admin assistants be able to provide on a regular basis. And I think a lot of this information is.
It's already in the.
Somewhere, in the newsletter or in the principal's report. And it's just a matter of culling that. So I'm, I'm not concerned. I think that it's moved from, you know, being asked to write standards-based learning articles or some of those things that became a challenge for us. And this, this no longer feels.
Great.
So no action matter on that? We should just strike that one?
As long as we're.
Yeah, I think where the conversation ended is fine with both Elaine and I. If we had the last conversation, you know, four weeks ago, it would have been great because, because the issues you've touched on are, you need to be sensitive that 11 of you can't task Jeff with work. And then when you task CSSU employees with work, it's got to pass the test as it, as it CSSU work that all four towns would want. And what was exciting is that the CSSU meeting, all four towns said they want all the.
Everybody wanted those.
We didn't have, we didn't have that, you know, perspective when we started. So I think we're, leave it with, we're very flexible, but just as you approach us, be sensitive to the, the other 70 hours of work you've given us.
Right. And, and feel comfortable to let us know if we're overstepping. I mean, I think that's the other piece of that because.
Communicate with you.
Oh, that's crazy, Tom.
You communicate with her.
Let's, let's, let's somewhere.
Okay, great. So I think we're on to the consent agenda.
Can I say something before we get there? Because I can't say it after you call the question. Director Wright to the policy committee, it's just a typo. It says, Director Richardson made the motion to appoint Director Wright to the policy committee. Director Mills seconded. It's just, I think it was you, wasn't it, Lorna? It's just a typo. She's cut the wrong name on it, that's all.
On the minutes. On the minutes.
On the minutes.
Do we need to do anything formal about that?
No, the typos will be usually fixed without. I just left the room when you did the adjustments to the agenda, so.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And our next meeting is November 18th. CSSU Board, November 18th, Board Chair's meeting on November 4th. And I, do we, I'd like a motion to go into executive session? Do we need to do that?
No, we don't.
No, you did the work that.
We did the work. Okay.
So, no.
So that should have been, okay.
No, you're not.
So could I have a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Salute.